Well, I think this is new.
Yes, it is.
We have background. All right, first up, we have some special recognition, and it's recognition for Kids Leading Communities. And I've got a bit of a write-up here, and I'm gonna just review this to provide some background, then we're gonna ask the kids to come in. Kids Leading Communities was formed shortly after Superstorm Sandy, when it hit Fairfield. Katie Betza, her friend Tara Marabaly, and Katie's younger brother Cole passed out hot chocolate and snacks to out-of-state utility workers, devastated homeowners, and the National Guard. Feeling the warmth and personal reward in helping others in need, Katie and a core group of friends, Tara Marabaly, Sophia Nykak, Lilian Cluman, and Katie's little brother Cole, formed KLC. The idea was to get involved in many different community needs and help many local causes. Eventually, KLC expanded to well over 30 kids over the past few years. KLC especially enjoys working with kids and seniors. KLC's most memorable volunteering includes bringing holiday gifts and interacting with the kids at Salvation Army for the past four years, and passing out balloons and sharing hugs with seniors at nearby Cambridge Rehab Center. KLC's mission is to have fun and to help those who need some love within the community. When KLC formed, all of the participating kids were graduating elementary school. Now, KLC consists of many, mostly sophomores, and with guidance from Katie and her friends, Cole's sixth-grade friends are now becoming more involved. A sampling of KLC's volunteering activities includes Penfield and Jennings Beach cleanups, Operation Hope, providing meals and participating in National Food Drive, Spooner House, prepared and serving meals to people in need, the Bridgeport Rescue Mission, collecting and delivering clothes and meals multiple times per year, Salvation Army Holiday Gift and Social Sharing, KLC's favorite volunteer activity, Cambridge Rehab Center, passed out balloons and mingled with seniors for multiple years, and the Bigelow Center, made and delivered holiday cards for seniors. This sounds like just a phenomenal group that we're blessed to have in our community with us. Kids, thank you. Would somebody like to comment from the group?
Um, yeah.
If you would, just come up to the podium, please?
Okay.
Because we have a microphone, and then you'll be on camera for all the folks at home.
So, I'm Katie Betza. I'm the founder of this organization. So, just repeating what you said, me and my dad, basically, after Sandy, we saw all the helpers, like, building houses and going around, and we thought it'd be nice just to go around and give them hot chocolate and coffee and doughnuts, whatever they needed. And a few of my friends joined me, and then it just started building from there, and we just enjoyed it so much that we wanted to build on and include tons of different events. Salvation Army is one of our favorites. We go there, and we hang out with the kids, and we give them presents, and we just have, like, a really fun day with them. And, I mean, now, it's, like, well, sports conflicts kinda gone our way, but there is a lot of us, I swear. There, it's just, like, really fun. It's all our friends. You get together, you do a good thing, and then you feel good about it, so, yeah.
Wow. I'm blown away. My colleagues like that saying.
Yeah, well, thank you for your dedication to the community. It's a great way to lead by example for your other classmates, to see that, you know, you can make a difference, and your downtime doesn't need to be spent at home on an Xbox or a Playstation, or whatever. You can be out there helping others. I also think it's great lessons to learn at your ages right now. So, I was a kid who did something similar growing up, and I'm telling you, the lessons you learn and the things you see by interacting the way you're doing now will give you a different outlook. So, thank you. Thank you for representing Fairfield.
Thank you.
Katie and the entire group, congratulations, and thank you for all the wonderful things you do for all the citizens in our town. Your parents, your family, your town should be very proud of you, and you have a bright future ahead of you as tomorrow's leaders in our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm wow. We talk all the time about Fairfield being volunteer-driven in terms of, when you look at all our boards, our commissions, all the, from Little League coaches to softball coaches, to everybody involved in our community. I think you hit on two key things that I heard about. One is the idea of making a difference, and I think that's an immensely valuable lesson. It's something that's gonna serve you all through your entire lives, wherever you end up. Hopefully, you'll stay in Fairfield, but wherever you end up, the community will be better. But the second is the idea of giving back, and everybody starts with, I know that the three of us did, in terms of our public service, with the idea of giving back to our community. Whenever I talk to a volunteer, that's one of the phrases that comes out. And to see that you've learned this at this early an age really gives you more years in your life to add value. And so, thank you for being part of Fairfield, and thank you for stepping up. And we do have some certificates to say thank you, so takeaway gifts for our contestants. All right? I don't know quite how we're gonna do this. Guys, what do you think?
I think we stand him in there somehow.
I'm gonna hand him.
Okay, can we do this?
Sure.
I'll hold the extras if you want.
Okay, you wanna start with that?
Sure.
All right, let's see if we can sort through this. All right, so first up, Katie Betza.
Thank you.
And Cole Betza. And Dylan Boschke. Did I say that correctly? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dylan.
Thank you.
And Heather Clark.
Absolutely.
Can I leave this with you?
Yes, I'll take the extras.
All right. Olivia De Sabella.
Also an extra.
All right. Wes Grosner. All right, Wes, congratulations. Thank you. Lilian Cluman.
Come on.
Aston Lee. Here we go. There you go, and thank you. Hayden Mattis. All right. Arianna Meehan. There we go. Thank you. Tara Marabaly. Yes. Here we go. Thank you. Lulu Murphy. There we go. Thank you. Sophia Nykak. Will Ready. Addie Rush. Also not here. All right, one last time. Congratulations and thank you. Now, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Thanks, guys. All right, next up on the agenda are appointments. To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointment to the Human Services Commission: Nietran, Democrat, 248 Alma Drive, for a term 1117 to 1121, and this is to fill a vacancy for Alita Ward whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
So, move.
A second?
Second.
Is Ms. Tran here? I wasn't sure she was gonna be able to make this, but... Any comments from my colleagues?
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Absolutely. Thank you for volunteering.
I had a chance to talk with Ms. Tran. I'm very impressed with her background and what she's gonna bring to the Human Services Commission. I think it's, it's great that she's willing to step up and serve, and especially as a replacement for Alita Ward, who did such a tremendous job as a number of years, and I think this makes our Human Services Commission much stronger. Any comments in the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? Yes. All in favor? Aye. All right. Next up, for the Roger, okay to take these?
Yeah, please do.
Please. The Roger Sherman Elementary School Building Committee Appointments, and this does require RTM approval. To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments to the Roger Sherman Elementary School Building Committee. One, Patrice Klein, Democrat, 73 Alden Street. Two, Eric Lang, Democrat, 365 South Benson Road. Three, Meredith McCormick, Unaffiliated, 184 Spring House Road. Four, Brian Popini, Democrat, 941 Reef Road. Five, Alex... How did I say that? Alex's last name?
Putzus.
Putzus. Alex, are you here? Okay, then I apologize, Alex, in advance. I shouldn't, I should've asked you first. Republican, 78 Cambridge Street. Six, Richard Speckel, Republican, 112 Homestead Lane. And seven, Jenna Trotzer, Democrat, 344 Penfield Road. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any comments from the board?
It's a great group of people we put together. Their backgrounds are fantastic. It's, it's a strong team to finish the Sherman project and get it completed and get that community school back to where it needs to be, so I'd like to thank them all for volunteering.
Are we gonna add to this in the future, or is this the starting group? We have, we have seven people. We have the ability to add to it.
Okay.
So, if that's appropriate. I think I reached out to you, and I think also Jamie Millington, I ran across him and asked if there were some other nominations of folks that might be interested to do that. So... I appreciate everybody's willingness to serve right now. It's Phase Three of the Sherman Elementary School Project, so I wish you luck and look forward to hearing from the Building Committee in the future. Okay? Any comments on this? All right. I had, I think there's some great background in the folks here. A number have been involved in both the Sherman School community, as well as our town, for a number of years, and I'm very excited about getting them off and running and started. Obviously, Sherman's very important, not only for the school community and updating the school with some very much-needed enhancements and improvements, but also addressing the complication of the FEMA constraints on how the project can proceed, and how important it is that we stay under the FEMA limits, so we don't complicate the project and incur significant financial penalties for exceeding that. So, that will be an ongoing struggle, and that's one of the things that forced us during Phase Two to make a Phase Three, because the initial bid came back with much higher costs than we anticipated. So, there'll be an added complication here, so we'll need folks working very closely with our FEMA officer, Jim Went, who's with our Town Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, are there, first off, how many of the folks are here? I don't know, one, two, three. Okay, just say your names so they can allow.
Patrice Klein.
Yep.
Meredith McCormick.
Yep.
Richard Speckel.
Thanks.
Brian.
Brian?
Jenna Trotzer.
Great. Okay, super. We had some great conversations on the phone. I wanna thank you for taking the time and also for volunteering. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? Yes. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you all. My office will be in touch. You'll need to get, we'll set up both orientation meetings. You'll need to get sworn in prior to that. Kathleen Griffin can help you with that from my office. Next up, from the Director of Public Works, to hear a report on fill-up Public Works truck event coming up. Mr. Michelangelo, do you have some information for us?
Yes, I do.
Wow. You brought a truck.
Joe Michelangelo, Director of Public Works. Next week is National Public Works Week, May 20th through 26th, and one of the things that our Connecticut chapter of our professional association is doing is having a campaign fill-up Public Works truck, and we're taking donations of food. So, how we're doing it in Fairfield, we've constructed a bunch of these trucks to have seven of our town buildings, both Town Hall, Independence Hall, Park Rec, two libraries, Police Station Lobby, and the Senior Center. So, seven locations, we're gonna have drop-offs for residents to come during that week. We're also gonna have some satellite collections at various soccer games, Little League games, and the object, of course, is to have donations for, for food, and we'll pile it all into one big truck. We've selected, obviously, Operation Hope in the Fairfield chapter of the Connecticut Food Bank to receive the donations. We're also having an effort with the schools, too, to also contribute to them, but it's, you know, it's something, it's a first-time event. More than half of the town's public works departments in Connecticut are, are doing it, and you can see from our, our truck there, our little model truck there, the guys had a little fun doing it, too.
Yep.
So, it's something that, that's both good for the community, and it's good for us, too. One of the things we're doing in our, in our placards are advertising, obviously, it's too small to see, but at our notification, our posters advertising the event and what type of materials we're bringing, we also took the opportunity to, to give a list of some of the functions that we're involved with in public work, so it's not even, you know, it's a, it's great for the community, but hopefully it gives some education to some of the facets that we're involved into in Fairfield Public Works.
Okay, now, quick, where are some of the places that folks can drop off food and goods to?
In the lobbies of seven town buildings, so it'll be...
You gonna tell us what those seven buildings are?
Yes. Independence Hall, Town Hall, the Park Rec Building on 75 Mill Plain Road, Police Station Lobby, the two libraries, and the Senior Center. And additionally, we'll have various Little League and soccer games, and once again, we'll have it on the, on our town website, through the Board of Ed, the Peach Jar, the flyer went out there, so we're trying to get the information out as many means as possible, and so we'll fill up the little truck and then keep emptying down the big, big truck. At the end of the week, we'll have, hopefully, two big trucks going to each of our donation locations.
Okay, any comments from my colleagues?
Well, I would say thank you for, for taking this. I know a lot of people benefit from your work, the guys at the Public Works, the volunteer hours they're putting in to get this done, and I hope the community really embraces this. As, if you look at the board, you can see the other things which Public Works does throughout the course of the year to help our community, so this is just one of the many things. So, for those of you at home, look for the flyers and the Peach Jar, and be prepared, have some extra food in case you come to any of the town buildings, and be prepared to drop off and support Public Works's effort.
Kevin?
Excellent. Thank you very much, very much. This is a great event, and it's also great timing as well, because we're about six months removed from the holiday season, which is the high peak of, you know, need at the food bank, and sometimes during those months that are off-season, you know, food supplies dip a little bit, and it's a great time to help replenish those food supplies continuously throughout the year, so thank you very much.
And Joe, I wanna thank you and your team. You guys certainly have, have helped us through a very tough winter. You guys get tasked with doing a lot of things to keep the town running and kind of out of the spotlight. We don't get to see the DPW workers as often as we do perhaps other town employees, but I think it's a tremendous value statement and a tremendous contribution that, in a statement of how much your team appreciates the town of Fairfield and values the town of Fairfield and cares about the town of Fairfield, not only with how you do your day job, but with doing extra things like this that aren't required, aren't expected, really go above and beyond the call of duty. So, I wanna thank you, and please convey that thanks to your entire team.
Yes, I will.
And I look forward to seeing some of these orange trucks, and let's see if we can fill them up on behalf of the town, and again, thank you very much for your help here.
Thank you.
Are there wheels on that?
Yes, there are.
It's like a dolly. You guys built a real truck.
Blue book truck, it worked.
Thank you. And there was a thinking, because the, our friends at the Board of Ed and the Superintendent's Office have two more meetings tonight to attend in addition to this one. It seemed to make good sense to take item number 10 from our agenda out of sequence and move it up to next, so if I can have a motion from the board?
Make a motion, move number 10.
And a second to take number, and a second?
Second.
Second to take number 10 out of sequence and move it next on the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so, Dr. Jones, I don't think you have to say anything else at this point. I think we've been through this, so let me kind of set the stage for this. The item number 10 is to hear, consider, and adopt a bond resolution entitled "A Resolution Approving $1.5 Million for the Costs Associated with the Planning, Design, and Obtaining Cost Estimates for the Renovation and Expansion of Mill Hill Elementary School and the Cost of Relocation of Temporary Classrooms Installed at Mill Hill Elementary School and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation." May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
This item is now before us. I'm going to actually find it in my packet here. Here we are. So, in our packets, we have the resolution. Now, this item had been before us before. It's come back because the Board of Finance made some changes to this, to the bonding resolution, which required it come back for the Board of Selectmen. If we approve these changes as-is, it would then go directly to the RTM, and I believe the RTM has, is ready to take it this month. So, these changes, specifically the, the changes to the resolution in the first paragraph and I believe the last paragraph, but I'm gonna read the first paragraph. "As recommended by the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, the town of Fairfield hereby appropriates the sum of $1,500,000 for the costs associated with planning, design, and obtaining cost estimates for the renovation and expansion of Mill Hill Elementary School and the cost of relocation of temporary classrooms installed at Mill Hill Elementary School and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation." May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
This item is now before us. I'm going to actually find it in my packet here. Here we are. So, in our packets, we have the resolution. Now, this item had been before us before. It's come back because the Board of Finance made some changes to this, to the bonding resolution, which required it come back for the Board of Selectmen. If we approve these changes as-is, it would then go directly to the RTM, and I believe the RTM has, is ready to take it this month. So, these changes, specifically the, the changes to the resolution in the first paragraph and I believe the last paragraph, but I'm gonna read the first paragraph. "As recommended by the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, the town of Fairfield hereby appropriates the sum of $1,500,000 for the costs associated with planning, design, and obtaining cost estimates for the renovation and expansion of Mill Hill Elementary School." And here's the addition. "With consideration of three alternate capacities of 378, 441, and 504 students without prejudice towards any option." Then it continues on with the original writing. Whoa. "And the cost of relocation and temporary classrooms installed at Mill Hill Elementary School with costs including architectural design, specialty consultant, environmental engineering, and other costs and expenses as are related there to the project." The rest of the document, I believe it's as it was presented to us, with a following exception. Paragraph number 11. "After the appointment of the Building Committee and the election of a Building Committee Chairperson, the Board of Finance requests the attendance of such chairperson at the next scheduled Board of Finance meeting to discuss the project." Any questions or discussions on the changes in wording from our board?
No, we've had them for a couple of weeks now, reviewed it. I was able to get to Mill Hill and do a tour. I wasn't able to do it with the group after the last meeting. I concur that the renovation needs to occur. The school does need the upgrades. I think the question boils down to exactly what the Board of Finance put in here. What's the right number to build it at? 378, 441, and 504. So, the path which we're on right now works for me, and we'll have that discussion when the Building Committee comes back, with the different options of what is best suitable for the students there, what's best suitable for the taxpayers, as far as what we can afford to do, and hopefully we have an idea of what the site can actually handle by the different things which are in the thing, in this resolution, from traffic to parking to other, other things we're asking to be looked at, so I support where we're at right now.
Mr. Kylie?
Thank you, sir. I support this measure going forward as well, and I like to think of it in terms of flexibility. And, you know, we, we aren't quite sure at the moment what the building will look like, how big the building will be, you know, small, medium, or large, what will fit, what's appropriate for the neighborhood, and what fits into the overall planning scheme for the, for the, our school system, you know? Where our children are down the road, what schools we need seats at, what schools we need rooms at. So, I support this. First and foremost, the building needs to get repaired and updated. We've, we've been through the building a few times, and there's no question about it. That building is definitely inferior to both other schools in town and to what we expect our schools to be as a rule, so that work has to be done. I'd like to see it get done. I'd like to see it get done as quickly as possible, in the most efficient manner possible, and we'll have some decisions to look at next year or sometime down the road on what the actual costs are, what the options are, but in the meantime, we can remove portables, we could still, we could start looking at things like removing portables, getting the bids, finding out what the numbers are, and, and making that community aware of the fact that we're going to move ahead and, and update their school as it should be. So, I fully support where we are in this, this bonding resolution.
All right. I think that, yeah, obviously, we've discussed this back and forth, and I think as a Board of Selectmen, I think what we were hoping to do is that in the past couple of months that we could've gotten some agreement between the three boards, because we all have to agree, the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Selectmen. To spend any money, we need the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and the RTM to agree on this, but we're hoping we could be clear on the direction to the committee. It doesn't look like we're able to do that, so in order not to hold up the project, I think we're looking at approving the resolution as it stands, which would then send it directly to the RTM. I think to make any final decisions, we're gonna need a few things. We're gonna need an overall plan. We're gonna need to know what is anticipated being done with the Mill Hill School. We've looked at projections over a 10 years, and it doesn't appear that the Mill Hill community, the Mill Hill District, requires a school at the higher end of this size range. So, it's gonna be a question of coming back and saying, what are we doing and why are we doing it? There are potential site limitations, which we won't know till the, there's more extensive work done in testing the site, but from the topography, where we have a fairly limited amount of flat space on this site, to the ledge that might be, might be below the hill, to the traffic, not only onsite traffic and whether that can be handled by a plan, but also the off-site traffic, because we already have some issues on that, and what the impact is of making a school considerably larger. There are currently 350 students at Mill Hill today, so going to something closer to 500 would have a significant impact on traffic onsite as well as in the neighborhood. So, there are a host of questions, and ideally with building committees, we get these, some of these solutions worked out up front and have things sized properly. In this case, we were not able to do that, so we're gonna have to wait, but we will charge the Building Committee with coming back with a, three plans to be evaluated at some point in the future. Assuming what we approve gets the RTM and gets past the RTM and their approval, what it would mean is sometime in the future, perhaps a year from now, we'll have three plans with three sets of cost estimates back before this board, and this board at that point will have to make a decision on which plan moves forward to the Board of Finance and then onto the RTM. So, that's kind of where we are. Any clarifications from here?
When you mentioned the traffic patterns outside, you know, we, we have the big conversation about, about the school size, the 504 versus the 350 students which are there. I heard from several parents, you know, it's very difficult to attend in the wintertime, you know, the night concerts and the, the meetings afterward. You end up parking on Mill Hill Road up there, and there's no sidewalks, you're parking on the street. There's no streetlights. There's no streetlights. So, you've got, you've got kids getting out of cars without sidewalks after the sun sets and the hours change and it's dark, and it's, it's dangerous. So, when we talk about increasing the, the size and adding the potential of 100 more students there, I mean, you're adding 100 more cars, 100 more parents, 100 more people show, you know, showing up to those events, and the question really becomes whether that site can handle all of that. You know, the debate about the classrooms and that, it's a larger, it's, it's a bigger debate than that. I mean, I, I wanna have a conversation with our Public Works Director about maybe a site plan there which includes streetlights, and then when you put the streetlights in there, I'm sure you're gonna hear from the neighbors about not having streetlights on the street, and then, you know, again, there's no sidewalks around there, which is a real safety hazard for all the parents who are trying to drop off their students in the morning or pick up their students, so it, it's a bigger issue than simply the, the classroom size. And when you really talk to the parents and you talk about, you know, making things simpler for their lives and the safety of the kids, it, it's not just, we need the extra classroom space for the extra programs we may or may not have in the future, or the students which may or may not come in there. It's the entire campus which needs to be addressed, which becomes the conversation of the real, real expense to the town.
And as much as we really didn't mean to get into, unless you want to add something?
No, go ahead, Fred.
Much as we really didn't mean to get into a, a whole, certainly not a back and forth with the Board of Ed, we've kind of gone through all that, but I... But I would be remiss if I didn't offer Dr. Jones a chance to say anything, if you wish, before we finish off our discussions on this.
I just, I just want to reiterate, and I know I've had conversations with you individually, but just how much this project is needed, and I'm very grateful that you're moving forward today. We do have a tentative date for the RTM, so thank you for getting this on the agenda. We very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And as my colleague stated, and I think, I just want to reiterate that everybody who is involved in the approval process for this clearly understands as in favor of the renovation of Mill Hill. That is not the question. The question is, when we do the renovation, how big will, how big a building will fit on a size and how big a building is justified in terms of the costs that are required on that side. So, it's not a question of whether the renovation on Mill Hill is supported. I think it's supported by everybody I've talked to, and I want to say, everybody in every voting position I can think of at the moment. However, we do need to define what exactly we are going to build.
Right. And that's a good point. Just on a final note, after seeing the building, you know, when you look at the rooms that are in the building, where they are, the conditions that they're in, the lighting that they have, the sizes that they are, and you compare those to what we're doing in other schools, it, it's hard to, it's, it's hard for me to square how, how we can deliver the education in that building that we are required to deliver and that we do deliver at other schools across the town. So, it's most important, in addition to all these other issues that are important to the neighborhood, the, the traffic and the safety and the site, and all of those things are very important, and the economics, but it's, it's first and foremost important to make sure that we can deliver the quality of education within that building, no matter what size we end up making that building. So, I just want to be clear on that.
Okay. Census is a voting item. Any comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, we're back at the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's on to the RTM. There we go. All right. And I think we got you out of here in time so you can make your next two meetings, Dr. Jones.
Thank you very much.
Watch the weather out there. It's dark.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up? All right. Next up is Item 7 from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, to hear and consider a complete streets policy. If there's somebody who'd like to step up and present that to us.
Thank you. Hello. Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Ann Katus, and I'm here with Laura O'Brien and Bill Pollak. Together, we are the Government Subcommittee of the Fairfield Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. We are here today to present our complete streets policy. Laura, Bill, and I had our first conference call about complete streets close to two and a half years ago. Since then, we've been working diligently to research, write, and revise this policy to get us where we are today. The main starting point for our work was with Smart Growth America, a national organization that is dedicated to bringing better development to communities nationwide through research and leadership. As a national leader on complete streets, Smart Growth America provides guidance for authors of complete street policies in cities, towns, and states across the country. In addition to researching national guidelines, we also connected with towns in our state that had been, that have been through the process of adopting complete streets. Towns such as West Hartford and Middletown were quite informative and very helpful to us along the way. Much of my work was in research. One main thread that emerged over the past two and a half years is how quickly complete streets is becoming something expected of towns. Many private state and federal funding sources now use the existence of a complete streets policy to grade grant applications. Also, complete streets projects open up additional funding sources and are now getting funded over other projects. One example of such is the most recent Tiger Grant. In March 2018, excuse me, 16% of the awards went to complete street projects, more than rail and transit combined. I would like to now turn this over to Bill Pollak, the head of our Government Subcommittee, to begin his presentation.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you to the board for putting us on your, your busy agenda and for, for hearing our presentation. Just to add a little bit of background, when we got started with thinking about developing a policy, we knew that many departments in town should have some input and a lot of input on this policy. It would really affect many, many other departments. So, we met with DPW and, and Engineering, as well as TPZ, before we even really put any pen to paper and sat down with them about the concept of, of a complete streets policy. And we heard a lot of positive feedback, and, and they felt like we can proceed under the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee format of, of working with them and putting together this policy as opposed to another agency or another department working to put this policy together. So, we got started and we worked with Engineer Hurley, who is also on the, an ex-officio member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Santina Geronco from the Health Department is an ex-officio member. We had several meetings with TPZ and DPW, meetings with the Police Department Traffic Safety Unit, Police Commission, Economic Development, the Sustainable Task Force, which was formerly the Clean Energy Task Force, and as well as discussions and correspondence with other stakeholders, including MetroCog, who had a lot of input for us, Greater Bridgeport Transit, the American Heart Association. And as Ann mentioned, we reached out to other municipalities to get some feedback on how these policies have been working for them. We understand that this policy is also going to be referenced in the latest, or the updated version of the POCD as well as proposed sustainability plan for Fairfield. So, what are complete streets? Complete streets, by definition, in a short statement really, are streets and highways and roadways that are designed and operated to be, to enable safe and comfortable access for all users of the roadways. So, we understand that roadways need to accommodate cars and trucks and all kinds of motor vehicles, but they should also be accommodating other users of the roadway, which are often pedestrians, bicyclists, people of all abilities, and, and other alternate modes of transportation. We know and we've seen and we hear about the fact that when, when pedestrians and bicyclists and other modes of transportation are accommodated in transportation planning, the neighborhoods and the communities tend to benefit greatly. They become more walkable, more livable. Property values tend to, tend to rise. Private development often comes into these areas and, and looks to, looks to, to add, add to those, to those communities. Currently, there's over 1,200 policies nationwide. That includes municipalities of all sizes and shapes, state policies, regional planning agency policies. In Connecticut, we have West Hartford, Middletown, New Haven, Portland, Hartford, Enfield, South Windsor, and Stamford. Some of those are actually town ordinances. I know Hartford and Stamford are. New Haven has had a complete streets policy in place for, I think, close to a decade, if not even longer. And they actually have quite a large manual on design guidelines for complete streets. They've been implementing it considerably over the last decade. We also have been hearing from neighboring municipalities as we've been working on this, Stratford, for example, and Bridgeport, we've had discussions with them. They have some interest in what we've been coming up with, as they've been working on similar initiatives. Some of the benefits of, of streets that are designed for all users are complete streets. Certainly, they're safer. When transportation planners and engineers are thinking about more than just cars and trucks and, and emergency vehicles as well, they're also thinking about pedestrians and bicyclists and thinking about crosswalks, sidewalks. We just heard some discussion about sidewalks and getting safely to and from schools. All of that is, is, is considered under complete streets way of thinking. As I mentioned, they tend to lead to more walkable, livable neighborhoods. We know that some of the, especially the younger generation, seem to be seeking out neighborhoods where they can walk to the store, walk to perhaps the post office, walk to parks, walk to beaches. And we've seen property values rising in those areas that are more walkable. Having a policy in place also shows that, that our town is, is, is really forward-thinking and considering, considering that when we apply for grants for transportation funding, we are seeing more and more that, as Ann mentioned, grants are going to the municipalities that already have a policy in place. Recently, there was a $450,000 state grant just a few months ago. That Stratford got, it was a complete streets grant for their complete streets plan that they've been working on. So, it's real, real efforts and real, real funding that can, that can come from this. We also believe that there's actually a chance of perhaps getting left behind. When funding opportunities are there, we'd like to be able to say that we've got a strong policy. We already have a Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. We have a master plan, of course, that was endorsed by, by your board, which we appreciate very much. And this is, this is the logical next step to that. I'm sure you have seen, or I can certainly reference the, the master plan, that one of the initial steps that you create a Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, which was done, one of the next steps is to develop a complete streets policy. So, so that's where we have taken it to so far. We understand, cost is always an issue when it comes to town policies, town projects. This policy, enacting it or implementing it by itself, doesn't add any cost. The policy is, you know, virtually written. We're certainly open to feedback. We'd love to hear feedback. But that work is, is done. Sometimes that, those, sometimes those, these policies are actually developed by outside consultants or by town staff, but we've gone through that process. And when it comes to actually a project that is implementing complete streets, the policy is flexible so that it allows for discretion. If, if implementing complete streets, to a certain degree, adds cost to a project that makes it, makes the project prohibitive, it doesn't even going to happen, then there's prohib, there's provisions in the policy that you don't have to necessarily follow every, every letter that's in there. Needs to make sense. It also needs to be context, context sensitive. We are not anticipating that all of a sudden transit stops and sidewalks are going to be all throughout Greenfield Hill. Not good planning. Doesn't make good sense. We accounted for that in the policy. But where it does make sense, we think we can make it happen. So, I just have a couple of images here. This is in Norwalk, where they have a two-lane, just a regular street. They do have a wide, had a wide street that they could work with. They put in a, an actual dedicated bicycle lane, a buffer, striping area, and then a parking lane. This is up in Georgetown, Connecticut, up in Reading, where they redid major roadways up there. This, this is complete streets, where you have clear crosswalks, accessible handicap ramps, signaling that makes sense, pavement striping that makes sense, even stop bars. You know, often, oftentimes, complete streets improvements really don't cost a whole heck of a lot. They're, they're often just pavement striping. If a roadway is being redone and curbs are being moved around anyway as part of the roadway, then they should look at the complete streets and say, you know, maybe the curb should go here rather than there. But it's often striping and signaling and signage. And then the last image over here is in West Hartford. It's blue-black square. And an interesting part of this project, you can see that it's a really nice sidewalk and things, but they've also done what we call pedestrian bumpouts, where it shortens the crosswalk. Doesn't cost a lot, but makes a lot of sense so that people don't have to cross a parking aisle, two lanes or four lanes of traffic, another parking aisle, just to get from sidewalk to sidewalk. Sometimes you can cut that off and make it shorter. It's a, it's a, it's a good planning measure where it can be done. Set a couple more images in town here. Areas that we could, we know we could do better. This is a transit stop. That's a Circle Diner in the background. This is in the lawn area in the middle of a very, very busy intersection. People have to actually stay here and stand here to get onto the bus. They're oftentimes running across the street here. There's no sidewalk. There's no shelter. This is actually about three feet higher than the roadway. You have to sort of get across the street, climb up the lawn to get to a, a bench. We know we can do better than that. This area here is on the Post Road. Again, there's, there's some things that we like. You know, we have nice sidewalks and street trees, but where do we go from here? The pedestrian kind of gets stuck. This is another example, right at that intersection. We start out okay. We're at a curb ramp. We have a signal. We have a nice crosswalk. But when we get to the other side, there's a, there's a full-high curb, there's a UPS box, the signal is right in the middle of the crosswalk. Not hard to fix these things, but why don't we think about them, you know, when they're being implemented? Areas that we've done well, we, we have several bike routes in town that are striped, that they're signed. This is an area that has a nice sidewalk, or this is the old Post Road, a buffer strip with nice street trees, plenty of room for, for bicycles. And I think many improvements in town are going to be for pedestrians, and Laura's going to talk about that a little bit as well. But this is an example down by the library, nice crosswalks, signals, buffers from the street for pedestrians, wide sidewalks. Those are the kind of complete streets implements that we can see happening in Fairfield. So, again, thank you for your time. Thank you for having us on the agenda. I'm going to turn it to Laura.
Thank you, Bill and Ann. I just have a few comments. When I talk about complete streets, to people unfamiliar with the concept, their initial assumption is that it's being proposed to make roads more bike-friendly. I explained that it's actually intended to make roads safer and more accessible for all users. I believe pedestrians may be the biggest beneficiaries of this initiative. Whether you are disabled and in need of better sidewalks and handicap ramps, or someone trying to access a bus stop, or simply trying to cross the street, better street design is in your benefit. After all, aren't we all pedestrians? According to the Yukon Crash Data Site, in the last five years, our town has had 59 pedestrian incidents involving injury. In the last two years, two of these have been fatal. From 2005 to 2014, 376 people were killed while walking in Connecticut. And the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety just released a report saying pedestrian deaths have reached their highest level in 28 years nationwide. Most of the time, DPW and Engineering do a great job of taking care of pedestrian needs or taking pedestrian needs into account when redesigning or repaving roadways. A complete streets policy simply requires that they evaluate their designs versus current, versus current complete street standards and do what is feasible and practical to improve sidewalks, crosswalks, handicap ranks, ramps, signal operation, lighting, bus stop access, and anything else that could enhance pedestrian safety as well as safety and accessibility for all other users. Thank you. And at this time, I want to introduce the Chairman of our committee, Keith Gallinelli.
Thank you very much. All right. I just wanted to say a few things. As we were sitting back here, I noticed there's a lot of people that have been to our Bike and Pedestrian Committee meetings, from the Health Department, Engineering, our state representative, people that were on the original committee. Our Bike and Committee, our Bike and Pedestrian Committee is from the Board of Selectmen. We've been at it now for about four years. I do want to thank Bill, Ann, and Laura for all of the hard work. They put a tremendous number of hours into this. They've met with countless people. I think we've seen a lot of the letters of support. I know that Bill had provided letters of support from many, many of the different people in town. What we did about a year and a half ago was we said, okay, we, we've, we've made some significant strides in Fairfield. We've put in some striped bike lanes. We've identified gaps in sidewalks. We've been working with Engineering. We've done events. We've been to schools, worked with the Police Department. But what we wanted to do is we wanted to look forward, and we wanted to see what did we really need to do as a town to continue our work? Because just doing events and things like that, that is only a certain number that you can do. And so, this complete streets policy really is a culmination of what our group is trying to do. It's the next step. And actually, last month, we had the new Sustainability Committee, which was the Clean Energy Task Force. They came and spoke to us. And I'm probably going to get the nomenclature incorrect, but to have a sustainability score is something that I know that the town is looking to do. One of the main components of that score is to have a complete streets policy. I think it's worth almost one-half of the number of points that are needed in order to get to the first level. One of the main components of that score is to have a complete streets policy. I think it's worth almost one-half of the number of points that are needed in order to get to the first level, just by having the policy. So again, I just wanted to say that one of the things is it does not, it does not cost the town anything. It does not add significant cost to projects. It just requires that you do take a look at what's there now, what could be done, if possible, and puts a framework around it so how you can move forward. So thank you very much for considering this. We do hope that we can get in front of the Board of Selectmen again as an approval vote. And I'm here, I guess, to answer questions. And I'll probably turn it over to the subcommittee that's done most of the work because they are the experts. I'm just the beautiful fit. No. Yeah, so please.
Yeah, just to kick off some of your, first of all, thank you to you and your team. I mean, when you mentioned some of the other, you mentioned Norwalk and West Hartford. And not every town that, when you look at examples of this, was built like Fairfield, where we grew up over 375 years and we didn't exactly make the widest roads. We don't have a lot of boulevards. We don't have a lot of workable space. So thank you for taking on the creative problem-solving task of trying to implement this in a town that's not exactly pedestrian or bike-friendly today. But with that as a leadoff.
Actually, I would say the town is fairly friendly in parts. You know, there are certain parts of town where it does not, it was not built that way. You know, when you get up into Greenfield Hill, it really was not built to have people walking great distances. But as you can see down by the beach, we're making strides, you know, especially in some of the areas where you do have a lot of people around schools. But we definitely can do better. And I think that's really what we would like to do. And, you know, as we see projects like Mill Hill coming about, if you can get half the people to bike or walk to school, and we had some events where they've done this, then the kids who have come to school, you can reduce the cars by half, you know? And that, then the traffic starts to go away. The parking situations improve. People are able to walk. I walked in Mill Hill as a kid, you know? But now I see people literally driving around the corner to drop their kids off. You know, it's, it was less than a quarter mile, but people are driving there.
Yeah, mom, mom didn't love us. She never drove us to school.
No. But, you know, I think with the number of cars out there, it is more unsafe because you're not going to put a child on a bike when you have, you know, SUVs going at 50 miles an hour down Mill Hill Road, which I see. You know, that's where my parents still live up there. We see that every day, you know?
Any comments or questions for my colleagues?
Just a couple of questions. And, you know, Ann and Laura and Bill and Keith and your entire team, thank you very much. I echo Mike's comments about the work you've put in over the years and all the effort that's been made to bring this forward. Thank you and congratulations. You mentioned that you've, that there are 1,200 of these policies across the country, and I think you referenced maybe eight or 10 in the state. So can you just help me better understand the types of things that you've learned from looking at other cities and towns within the state, which might be in our age range?
Right.
And then what you might have learned by looking at some towns and cities across the country that might be younger and have more opportunities to build things the way you would build them today if you were starting from scratch?
Right. Certainly, if you're starting from scratch, which we see, you know, more out west than even down south, they have huge right-of-ways. They have a lot of room to work. They don't have necessarily the topography that we do. They have a lot, they have a lot of less limitations than we do. They can make these grand, you know, complete streets that have everything you might want to see in a complete street. Parking separated from pedestrians, separated from drivers. We know that's just not going to happen in Fairfield, for the most part, and in Connecticut and in the Northeast. A lot of these policies are happening in the Northeast. New York and Massachusetts have a ton of these policies, both in small towns as well as in the big cities. You know, we would look at something like New York City, but it's clearly something that's totally different than really what we're up to.
Right.
But, you know, they do have some interesting ways of doing things down there with the bike lanes and all that. And bike share, you know, they have bike shares and these other things we've learned from them, kind of proceed on some of those things. But Middletown, Warwalk, West Hartford, they are, they're a little further along than we are because they've started, some of them have policies. But our policies are worded, you know, similarly. We wanted to make sure it's flexible. I mean, you know that, like I said, we're not going to have a transit system through Greenfield Hill. That's not a goal. It doesn't make sense for anybody. So it needs to be flexible. So we made it flexible. It needs to have some provisions for cost or provisions for topography, historic sites. We've thought about all of these things, and so we tried to make sure that it's flexible. We did put in the policy that there will be an annual review by the Bike-Ped Committee. And what that would involve would be assessing, you know, what the policy has done over the last year. And we would certainly be getting feedback from DPW, TPZ, and your board, and any feedback that could go into that report. And then the policy could be adjusted if need be based on, based on that. So we wanted to make sure that it, that it's flexible, but it has teeth and makes sense for our town. It's really custom for our town.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly have the constraints of a 300 and almost 80-year-old town, right?
That's right, sure.
You know, unlike, you know, those other cities that you mentioned across the Midwest and the West. So we certainly can't do a lot of that stuff, but we can learn from that stuff, right? Like my, I've got family that live in the Woodlands, Texas, is a suburb of Houston. If you ever get a chance to look at that town, it's pretty much how you would build a town if you started from scratch today. The roads all have two lanes and they're wide lanes. Everything is deep and cornered in. Inside of every road is like a five-foot sidewalk, and inside the sidewalk is a five, six, 10-foot walking path, biking path, and inside that is a row of trees. And then the Walmart's behind that. You can't even see it. I mean, it's how you would do things if you could from scratch today. And obviously, we can never get there, but we can take some of those concepts and combine them with what we have and the safety that we want to get to, and find some middle ground that works for everyone. I think that's what I'm hearing here.
Exactly. I just want to add something. Some of the towns that we've talked to have also gotten recognition from, from doing this. I know West Hartford's been recognized as a bike-friendly city. I can't remember the agency that recognized them. And they've also seen economic development. The business districts, a couple of them in West Hartford are really blossoming after they've redesigned their streets. And I know Middletown is, is working toward that as well.
Stratford, you know, just really.
Right. So we've, we've heard really good stories from these towns, so I think it, it could only help us.
Absolutely. And a couple of other quick ones? You talked about safety. Is there any information that you could forward on the accidents and, that you referenced prior, the number of accidents, or the increase, or the trending increase on what's happening on our roads, you know, here, across the state or across the country?
Sure.
And what might be the root causes? Obviously, this is a lot of it. There may be other factors involved that are pushing that, pushing those numbers upward. It would be interesting to see.
We can easily do it for Connecticut because the Yukon Crash Site has causes and dates and whatever's put. It's a rather robust site, so we could get some data on that for you.
That's accessible?
Yes.
And we are certainly hearing, you know, you hear in the news with the pedestrian accidents that throughout nationwide, and everybody's at fault. Cars are at fault. Pedestrians are at fault. So there's an education component, certainly, but things are designed, you know, as best as they can be to help protect against when people are looking at their phone or something or driving.
Well, yeah, certainly, I'm not minimizing the impact of this, but there is an increase of people walking and the phones, not paying attention, driving, as we well know, so.
Or crossing streets where there are not crosswalks. You know, I see that all the time, running across the post road and places they're not supposed to. You know, some of it's enforcement.
Sure.
But other times, if you're able to design features that allow for ease of, you know, visibility for the pedestrians, even for the cars, making sure that there's not, you know, we have some sort of mechanism for the turning. And as you look at the town and as we've even worked in our committee, and again, we're not going to go into areas where there is really no need for this, but as, for example, a perfect example is the Sherman Green area. I know that's up for redesign or redevelopment, or just even to look at, you know, is it, does it make sense the way it is right now, where we have crosswalks, how we have turning lanes, things like that? Because it's a very, very busy intersection. You have a lot of people going back and forth between concerts that are going on. You've got a police station, a fire station, a deli. You've got this, you've got that, and there's parking lots. So, you know, how can you make that safer? Because people will be there in all forms of transport, whether they're in a car, they're in a giant dump truck, you know, that are going to the dump, whether it's a fire engine, you know, how can you make these things safer? And so looking at some of those key areas and making sure that we at least have a policy in place to kind of guide people. And again, we're not doing the work. It's going to be done by whoever's, whether it's planning and zoning or public works or whoever, but have a guide for them.
And my last question, Bill, you touched on a couple of points that I thought were important, flexibility and policy. So obviously, we need to be flexible, especially in our town with what we have. And the other was the policy. And it was, it wasn't crystal clear to me by reading through the documents on how the policy would be, you know, rolled out, or how it would be enforced, or who, who would be the arbiter if there was a difference of opinion, right? Is it, is it a legislative thing? Is it a Board of Selectmen thing? Is it a zoning thing? So some of those, some of those clarifications weren't clear to me with what I read so far.
Okay. The majority of the improvements, not the vast majority, would actually be in the public right-of-way, town-owned, property-town-owned roads. DPW obviously has the authority and I think knows matters. They are often the designers. They're often the overseers of the outside consultants that are doing the designs for the work in the public right-of-way. So a lot of it does fall on engineering. And Bill, who's here, I know, has a couple of things to say, but he was, he's been involved the entire time, along the whole process. He's already on our committee. The health department's already on our committee. Police officers are already on our committee. So it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't really add to their workload. But, but I think a lot of it is overseen by DPW. And then it gives, it gives DPW a tool, but as far as TPZ is concerned, it gives them a tool as well. When developers are working on some major development, and they obviously will approach into the public right-of-way, it's another example to help them design it the way that we all think makes the most sense. So that's how the TPZ really comes into play. But it doesn't, it doesn't require a submission to TPZ with anything that's in here or anything that doesn't add to any application timelines or anything like that. We do put in there a review by the Bike-Ped Committee, which we can do already as part of, you know, if it's a public site plan application, then, you know, we have the opportunity. I would say our committee is similar to that economic development commission where we don't necessarily have approval or denial authority, but we can make recommendations. And that's consistent with, we put it to be consistent in this policy.
Thank you very much. I'm good. Thanks. Christopher, do you want to?
Yeah, listen, fantastic work. I know, I was part of the Stratford one, and it's paying great dividends for the town of Stratford. It's real. It's impactful to the residents. They see it. People want this type of work. And for your team to put it together, I do understand the hours and the dedication you put together, I mean, you put in to, to move this forward. So thank you for that. I guess the plan is for us to review it, and then at some point, you're going to come back and we'll adopt it as an official policy for the town?
That would be great. We'd certainly go to hear some feedback. I understand the town attorney had a couple of questions. I've been trading phone calls with him. We want to make sure we're on a legal level. But if you have other feedback, you can always obviously send it to us and we'll take it.
Thank you.
Just a comment from our committee. Don't kill me for this, but we did put, we did put kind of an internal goal, and we'd love to have it approved by the Fourth of July, so we can be independent of this. So again, you know, it's one of those things, you know, I do, I do credit the team that's been putting it together because, you know, it's one of those things that can drag on and drag on and drag on. But we really did want to put it before you, so at least you have an opportunity to review it. If there are comments, then we can have them addressed and then come back before the board for hopefully a final approval.
Okay. Few comments. One is that you mentioned this is helpful in getting grants. Do you have a list of grants or categories that, to make sure that everybody in town in a position to help knows that this would be a criteria for those grants and something that would put us in a better position for?
I'm sure it's not comprehensive. I have a, a list.
I don't need it right now, but if you could email that to me.
It's very small.
Yeah. It's rather long.
It's very long, but you know, and I think, you know, even the health department.
More, more grants, the better.
Yeah. A lot of the things we've done have been through grants through the health department that came because we had policies in place. We had things that are kind of off the shelf and ready to go. And I think Bill or Santina or Sands would have a little bit more information about that. But usually, when you have these plans in place, it just helps push you to the top of the list for the grant applications.
Well, then my question would be, which grants didn't we, weren't we able to check that off to be at the top of the list on? Somewhere, it's like, okay, what grants for how many for what kind of thing? So I'm looking for some, because obviously, it's a very tight market for grants, given funding at the federal and state levels. So I'm very interested in knowing what grants that we can make sure that we highlight our capability on.
Sure.
Have you had a chance to work with the folks doing the Black Rock Turnpike Study now? Since that's all about pedestrians?
I'm on the committee.
Okay.
And they're looking at some complete streets enhancements, but they still haven't come up with a design that they've shared with advisory.
But you guys are in close communication there, so we know that whatever they're doing will be consistent, or whatever we're putting in is consistent. We're doing.
Yes.
Very good. You talked about the town attorney feedback, so yes, I know he had some questions as to what was taking place there. Then in terms of a lot of what you're doing impacts and looking at, impacts state roads?
It does.
It took us over a year to get DOT to approve a stoplight change. All right? A stoplight change on their road. Any luck with DOT approvals on getting things done? We've had issues on the post road and other places, just trying to paint lines or do things that DOT is not always the quickest to respond to. You mentioned the state has a complete streets component. Is, does this approach fit with that? And if we're using their guidelines, does that help them move any faster?
Well, I can't promise speed, but the DOT does have its own complete streets policy that they implemented in 2014.
And this is consistent with that?
This is consistent with that, yes.
Part of their policy is encouraging the municipal municipalities in Connecticut to develop their own.
Right, it says complete street policy.
Their policy is very good. Their state policy is very strong.
I'm just talking about their speed of approval, yeah.
That's not in their policy.
Unfortunately, the difference between a really good policy and a really bad policy, if you don't implement it, is not different. So it's.
Could we get that, could you say that state policy?
Sure.
Thanks. Then the West Hartford Business District, you mentioned, would this help and promote the development. Can you get us some more background on that or something? I'd like to review that with Mark Bonhardt to kind of see if that can help in our economic development efforts, so we know, again, how to position this. What did they do? What businesses did they bring in? And kind of how did they use this in terms of putting that through? And then if I might, just a few questions here. So I look at the policy, and Chris, maybe you can add in some, because maybe you can help us in terms of how Stratford did this. But on page seven, about midway down, under clear accountable exceptions, it says, "Requests for exceptions shall include reasonable cost-benefit analysis and the understanding that complete street objectives may be achieved over time." What sort of cost-benefit analysis is being requested here? And who evaluates it?
I think it would be town engineer, DPW, and we're just reviewing the Bike-Ped Committee that we're evaluating. But the cost benefit is if somebody is looking at redesigning one of our main roadways and they, and it looks like if you move the curb three feet, all of a sudden it opens up all these, you know, amazing design options. But moving that curb over three feet impacts utilities and affects this and affects that, and it costs X, then they would do that analysis and fill it in and say, we either recommend doing it or we thought we don't.
It's more of an explanation of why it wouldn't be desirable, cost-effective to make that extra step.
Yeah, I just want, again, who makes that decision?
DPW.
Whoever's overseeing.
Whoever's overseeing it.
Engineering and DPW. We just have a comment authority on that.
Yeah, no, I just didn't...
The town will be overseeing the project. What's up?
Yeah, well, again, the Bill Hurley...
Yeah, Bill, I think you're going to have to come up to the podium and talk, Bill.
I'm going to seize my spot.
But Mike's question touches on my previous question about policy, and then, you know, how we enact it and, you know, make it work.
Right. Again, meeting with the Bike and Ped Committee every month, Bill Hurley, Fairfield Engineering Manager. This is really meant to be like a working document, a document that can be referenced. It's not really meant to be a regulatory document. So if your comments are that it might seem to be a little bit too regulatory, then that's one of the things that they'll have to, you know, revise. I know that, but you guys might not, so that's one of those things, or other people in the town might not know. I would say probably at least 75 or 80% of this document is already being...
Things we do, right?
Right. It's already, the zoning already has requirements. DPW already has requirements, things like that, subdivision regulations, et cetera. So a lot of it is already in there, but they did add some points to it, and that's one where we have to do a thorough review on.
Well, and I think from a policy standpoint, I want to be clear that it's documented who is kind of making those decisions, because it completes it. It shall apply to all local and state public roadways within the town, except as indicated in clear accountable exception. So I just want to be, like anything, you don't want to have the gray area six months from now, where you're sitting there potentially holding up a project, or not holding up a project based on what it is. So you want everybody to be clear on what takes place, and especially if we're trying to make sure that there aren't any additional costs involved.
Just if you don't, if you go to the appendix, and I think this is what you're referring to, the appendix, at least, now, these were just the measures, they're not the decision-makers. But I think this is what you're looking for, and essentially where they describe an item, and then they give an entity of who's responsible for it, whether it be DPW, the Bike and Ped Committee, and things like that.
Yeah, I saw that. I've got some questions on that one.
Oh, okay.
The, we talk about, "Design should follow best practices and policy guidelines, including the following documents," on page eight, and there's a list of those design documents. What's the ongoing process for kind of updating those and making sure people are aware of those? Not that I don't, we don't trust Bill Hurley to be...
But there's a lot of them on there.
That did seem like a comprehensive list, Bill, so I just...
Yep.
And how does that work? And how, because I know that, like, say, in our billing department, whenever the state adopts a new standard, Tom Conlon's got to order 25 new manuals and send his guys out the classes, and that we see that with an increase in our budget line in terms of what takes place there. So my question is, how does this work?
I think most of these are, I should say, some of them are definitely code requirements, ADA, ASO, highway codes, NACCO is urban design guidelines, federal private... So the transportation engineers and designers should be familiar with...
So if they're code requirements, we should be following them, and then whoever implements today's version should be responsible for implementing the updated version?
Correct. I think that's the latest edition of the rules.
Okay.
That's right.
Then, bottom of page eight, we talk about performance measures. The town shall implement the measurements and share the results. And that gets into Appendix A provides an agreed-upon performance measures, and Agency Department will provide them. Revision requires approval of the Bike and Ped Committee and the Department of Public Tell me how does that kind of approval process would work again? And who did, who did, that seems to make it a tie. How do we decide?
We worded it like that because Bill is on our, so it falls into Bike-Ped Review with the town engineers and Department of Public Works, so working together, as you mentioned, all our meetings, when we do this annual review. The Bike-Ped Committee is charged with gathering the performance measures. We had a much bigger list to start with, because we just have a broad list. We talked to all the different agencies, what can, what is a reasonable measure that we can actually get, and that's what ended up in the list. And then the Bike-Ped Committee is probably where we do, we reach out and try to get all of those measures, and then have that incident report.
First of all, I love the idea of measures. And I think that way too much of the stuff we do is soft, and that becomes a very, and however, having done that in a number of different business scenarios, the challenge is always, can you get those measures on a repetitive basis, keep them up to date, and is it part of the normal workflow to track those? So it's not something that somebody does in addition, because when somebody does in addition, there are times when they get busy or go on vacation, and they tend not to do that.
That's right.
And we even give Bill vacations from time to time. So we can get to those later, but that's my concern on that, is just, is it something we can do on a...
Ongoing.
Ongoing basis without an exceptional extra workload in terms of...
We chose them with that thought in mind specifically. And they are in appendix. So if they needed to be modified, it doesn't require modifying the whole document.
Well, that's one of the other questions in terms of who gets the, I mean, if this is a policy, and that's referenced in the policy, the question is, who does make those?
The appendix would come before a selected for modification. If this suddenly became unworkable for some reason, we needed to modify it. But it wouldn't require a vote on the whole policy.
No, it's just a question of amending, from that standpoint, so that the, kind of that amendment process, just, and again, not the biggest deal on one hand, but just be clear in what that is, so it's not something anybody's kind of arguing over two years from now, as opposed to like, hey, let's map this out so it's simple, clear, and straightforward, and we're on it. All future town of Fairfield land use plans, including transportation plans, design guidance, and related policies, should specify how they will support and be supported by the complete streets policy. That seems to touch on a lot of departments, including planning and zoning.
Yes, I spoke to, I know Jim had a topic about that specifically, and that one as well. It's fairly standard language where they reference other policies that are already enacted in town. So that's, it's sort of a back and forth, this policy references their policies, their policies will reference this policy.
Yeah, does planning and zoning have to vote on that in order for that to become part of their policy? Because if this board can't tell the Planning and Zoning Commission what to do?
Well, it wouldn't be in the zoning regulations. It wouldn't be referenced necessarily unless they wanted to, and therefore they would vote on that. It would, it's referenced in the POCD, for example, and similar types of policies that may or don't, or in the future will exist.
Yeah, I'm just looking, I'm not kind of arguing pro, I'm just literally trying to say, how does it, how does it work so it works smoothly between boards, and we don't run into communication? So we have something that we're either not going to do, or not implement, or not follow, because some other board doesn't want to do it. I don't want that to be something, again, we find out two years from now, as opposed to how we're going through that here.
Is there a way to limit that to zones in town?
Sorry?
Is there a way to limit it to specific zones in town?
You mean as far as zoning districts, or?
Well, I mean, you don't want this policy to affect something which, a project or something which isn't in Greenfield Hill. You know, you don't want, we don't want to slow down things. So I believe the Stratford policy is focused to downtown, the Paradise Green Area, the Lordship Area, like, and over by where the Two Roads Brewing is, they've created, like, I think they've created four different zones within the town where this policy's in effect in that area. So I look at something, you know, we've talked about Mill Hill earlier. I mean, ideas to focus it, I believe the idea may be focus it in specific areas versus the entire, entire town.
I think that will naturally happen, and that's why we put the context sensitivity as an exception to it. And I think the downtown engineer will know that this is an area that doesn't need that kind of effort, if you will, for lack of a better word. So it's not that we're trying to limit it to just certain areas. There might be individual spots that we could do some complete streets activity in another part of town that's near a school, for example, but we don't want to limit this to just certain zones in town.
Moving on, kind of page nine, under Prepare for Implementation. The town shall conduct an audit of existing policies and procedures within that should be consistent with complete, who's going to do that?
Well, then it goes into, goes into that, I think, DPW, TPZ, and Bike-Ped. And when I spoke to Bill and TPZ, it didn't sound like it was a major operation. They know their regulations, they know their policies, they know where something could be tweaked or adjusted to include language that would be consistent with this policy.
And again, item four here, it says, "The Town Planning and Zoning Department shall review and propose revisions to all appropriate land use regulations and policies to support implementation of the complete streets policy."
Yeah. I have a feeling that as this process has been going on, Jim has already been doing that. I mean, they've, and I've discussed with Jim Lenz and Emily, made a lot of comments that we implemented, or I should say, included a lot of their changes in the wording. That one, I don't remember them specifically bringing up, but I think as we've been working on this process, you know, they're already working into the POCD, you know, and they're thinking that they have it in mind, they've updated some zoning regulations in the past, so I don't think it's anything new.
Okay. Yeah, I just get concerned when it says revisions to all. That's one of those governmental things you get concerned about, when, because we've got a lot of regs, especially on the planning and zoning side.
Absolutely.
And then it says, "Within six months of adoption of complete streets, the review and revisions of existing policies, appropriate land use regulations, and related plans shall be completed."
It's time whether or else it will ever happen. Six months is too soon for, you know, us to do that, we can adjust that. Again, it didn't sound like it was a major effort to do that review.
Okay, yeah, I just haven't heard back from folks, but we'll check on that. That just seems, so, yeah, again, from a workload standpoint, I'm very concerned about what we're doing to our folks in terms of setting deadlines, that if it's no big deal, not a problem. If it is, I think we just need to take a look at that with DPW, planning and zoning.
Yeah, Mike, just on that same page nine, number two, just to let you know...
That was my next, yes, go ahead.
Originally, they had it as like, DPW or Engineering shall review and update the list of performance measures, and I said, whoa, wait a minute here. In order to save on the town's manpower, and since this is a policy that's being endorsed by the committee, they also have to take ownership in this, too. And so therefore, that one in particular, there is now, I've, you know, I recommended that the Bike and Pedestrian Committee now should review some of those benchmarks. It's just a way of, you know, lessening the load of just the town doing all the work. And in the case of some of the other measures, where I envision it of if my staff is too busy to calculate the actual numbers, we at least would provide the committee with the information, and then they can decipher it if need be, or something like that, as an example of trying to save some town labor, where we at least make the information available to the committee.
Well, that's what I mean. When I look at kind of the cost impact, I'm worried about not only actual cost, but labor dollars, in terms of what people are spending, and given the constraints our folks are under, because we have not added staff in quite a few years. But this says, "The town shall collaborate with town departments and other transportation agencies such as MetroCog, Greater Bridgeport Transit, Connecticut Department of Transportation, the United States Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration, Metro-Nauts, Railroad, and Amtrak." What does that all involve? That seems like a lot of coordination.
That's, already happens, I think. If there's a state project, we have to coordinate with DOT. If there's a project over there in MetroCog, it's happening. There is a good deal of language in the policy in general, I think, that puts together in one document a lot of things that are happening all over town already, but it puts it in a concise document, it puts it in concise guidelines. It shows people like, that are granting funds that were committed to it, and it's also in one place.
Okay. When it says, "The town shall identify regional, state, and federal funding sources," who in the town is going to do that?
That's already happened as well.
Same people who do it today.
Bill, I know a lot of grants, and I don't see that would be any different.
I think it's just a matter of the shalls, you know, and, because it makes it feel like the town, you know, must do this, even though we are already doing it. So maybe just adding things like where applicable, or, you know, strongly recommend, might be something that you guys are...
And I don't mean to suggest that we're not doing a lot of this. Again, it gets back to, you know, if we're shall going to do this, what are we going to do? Who are we going to turn it into? How do we, if we're taking this seriously, how do we make sure we're actually delivering on those components? So the first thing I'm looking for is who's responsible. So if you come back in here and say, hey, Mike, we didn't quite do it this, I want to know who I turn to and say, how come? What, who didn't do it? It's not the town didn't do it, but who didn't do it? Which department or responsibility within that? And the same way, "The town shall develop and maintain a map of existing bicycle infrastructure, including delineated bike routes, bike lanes, shared use trails, et cetera." Part of me says, we should already do that, because that's how we implemented it.
We want to continue to do that.
Okay. I just, I'm trying to identify what's new work and what's existing work, so I'm just as I was reading. Go ahead.
Just on that, on the series of questions that Mr. Tetra just walked through on getting prepared and implementing, is there a way that we can look at maybe some other towns in the state who have gone through these two steps, and kind of get some visibility from them on, okay, I mean, these sound like big blocks of work that need to be done, and they are, whether they're ongoing, or now we're going to, now we're going to assign them or redefine what they are. Maybe somebody could benchmark for us how they've done this, you know? What process did they go through? What departments were held accountable? What was their definition of, you know, the town or whoever was looking to get things done? Maybe that would be helpful to help us understand kind of the administration of it.
We have some notes on West Hartford and Milltown regarding that.
No, just like this.
And in both cases, they were mostly drawn up by town departments.
Okay.
The policy, it didn't come from a committee like ours. So the DPW, I believe it was, in West Hartford drew it up on their own, is that right? I can't remember who.
I think it was a big group.
But it was town, town employees who drew this up. It wasn't a committee. The committee helped, but we have some notes on that.
Okay.
I don't remember top of my head.
So what I'm hearing is that their policy came more from internal sources versus a committee recommending to the town?
It was combined effort.
It was combined?
Committee pushed it, but the internal sources drew it up.
And theirs is an awardment, right?
In both cases, I believe.
I think so, yeah.
Theirs is a call awardments, right?
I don't know.
Go ahead. It just might be helpful for us to clarify, you know, who kind of was responsible, and who did what, and what some of the parameters and definitions were. I think that would help me.
Sure.
Thank you.
As we look at some of the performance measures, again, some follow-up questions on those. You guys are going to put together the citywide walk score?
That's like a couple clicks online, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're going to put the sidewalk conditions ratings on here?
It's already done as well.
They keep that.
They did a sidewalk inventory of the entire town. DPW did.
Yeah, so to meet this measure, what do we have to do? Just do it and tell you we did it, or do we have to show it? What's involved in that?
We want to keep track of it, and we see which, where it improved, where any sidewalk needs may have been done, and we keep track of that.
We're looking for improvement.
This is sidewalk condition rating.
If it improves, that's a good thing. If it doesn't improve, we know it didn't.
I think the wording could be probably revised a little bit there, but I think we have, I have a list of emails from DPW of, say, the 15 sidewalks that were improved.
Okay.
And obviously, they were all based on public complaints.
Yeah.
So that's what I think they're going for, but the way they have it worded here, you may, you may have to revise that.
I don't mean to get in on now, this has been part of an ongoing conversation between Mr. Hurley and several of us for a number of years now.
Right.
In terms of how we do this. So I'd ask that perhaps offline, we can sit down and talk about that component, to make sure we're doing what you want, but also addressing at least what I believe are some of Mr. Hurley's historical concerns about something like that. The safety issue...
We got to be careful of that, too.
Yes. A lot of stuff, on these measures, things like commercial vacancies in downtown Improvement District, two things. One, I assume we've got a list of vacancies out of... One, I assume we've got a list of vacancies out of economic development, so that shouldn't be a real issue. Do we have a downtown improvement district?
I don't recall. I don't recall where that came from.
We'll have to get back to that.
Okay. Number of employees downtown, kind of same, I mean, when I look at Fairfield, we've got five downtowns, right? We've got downtown, we've got Southport Village, we've got Grassmere, we've got Greenfield Hill, and we've got the Black Rock Quarter. So my question on all these, what are you referring to when you say downtown?
That's a good question on that one. We should clarify that.
As well as citizen and business surveys of satisfaction of streets and sidewalks? I don't believe that's something we're doing right now, unless I'm missing something there. And Mark said he could do that without any problem?
Well, we did.
I don't recall that one either, and I think that was if they exist, when they're done, we wanted to capture them.
Well, again, if these are measures, you're saying if they exist, well, if we just say, "No, they don't exist," then we're done with that measure? Or is that, I'm trying to make sure we're...
We'll talk to Mark about that.
You all put a lot of work into this and laid this out. So if you're going to ask this board to sign off on it, then at two levels, one, we want to make sure we support it, and then conceptually, it all looks good. But then we also want to make sure we can do it. It's not like, oh, yeah, we'll do it, come back and talk to us in a few years. It's like, we want to make sure we can do it. So we want to deliver on what, you know, we're committing to as a town to make sure we support the effort that you guys obviously put in to get us here. So part of that's making sure we understand what these, and I'm an engineer, guys, I'm, I'm...
I'm used, I've grown up with engineers my whole life, so I don't...
So part of me loves measures, but I want to know that I can deliver on the measure, or we can deliver on the measure, or who we can look to to deliver on the measure.
Yeah, that's right.
So I don't, I don't, I want to make sure that we're...
And again, that might be where applicable, or when available, or just changing a couple of words just for a clearer definition.
Well, I think in some of these, also, we have to define where we're targeting, because it says assessed value of property. We've got a grand list. I could argue, yeah, we do that, but I don't think that's what you mean. I think you're trying to target this in certain areas.
I think we need to talk to Mark about the economic area.
And adjacent lot vacancies. We don't have a lot of vacancies in, at least not a lot of vacancies in town. We have some vacancies in storefronts and retail and commercial places, but not many, because we have a 90% occupancy rate. So my question is, what are we measuring there, and what's the goal in doing that? And is that in certain targeted downtown areas that we're targeting this at, as opposed to vacant lots up in Greenfield Hill? Which I don't think is what you're targeting there.
It's not what we're targeting.
And that might have been plucked from another complete street, so...
Well, yeah, and if someplace is more urban, that would make sense. And in West Hartford, that would make sense, because they've got some issues.
I think the word "commercial" in front of that is necessary.
Missing words will get you every time. And then going on to other, some of this, certainly you can track, number of tree, street trees planted, that's the tree ward, and I assume, and that should be pretty straightforward. We don't plant that many.
That's right.
But again, my question is, is that anywhere? If we're planting dogwoods up along, you know, Hillside Road, is that what we're after, or is that trees we're planting in downtown or Grassmere or Southport?
Well, they have, I think there's a street tree program that the tree ward and the forest tree do every year, so they would be keeping track of...
But some of those, some of those, some of those street trees, I mean, it may apply to streets along rural roads. And my question is, is that part of what you're tracking? We don't plant that many, so I'm sure it's easy to track. My question is, are we tracking what you want us to track?
Right, right, right. I mean, the, the policy, I understand your question about the zones, and this is related to that. The policy should really encompass the entire town, at least we think it should, because sometimes it is a minor improvement, sometimes it is a street tree, sometimes it is a curb ramp in Greenfield Hill. So, so we are tracking some of those things, and if they need some clarification, we can certainly do that, but it doesn't necessarily mean every time downtown or specific commercial area. I think it is important to get the measures for, you know, throughout town.
And I don't mean to argue against either side, I'm just trying to clarify what your intent was in terms of...
That one, I think the intent tended to be townwide.
Okay, and it's not a quiz, you can kind of step that through, and I think we can...
That's my understanding, that was not...
And some of it might be bragging of what the town, you know, does, you know, or just keeping track of it, but there's a difference between a performance measure and something that you want to add into a report where you want to, you know, take credit, or that the town would want to take credit for, so...
Number of green infrastructure features installed, what do you have in mind there?
We talked a little bit about green infrastructure in the policy, and that's where not only are we necessarily improving sidewalks, but we might be improving drainage and planting areas with vegetated buffers.
Okay, was that mentioned in here, or did I miss that?
It is, there's a paragraph about green infrastructure. And green infrastructure, it's an interesting terminology, I suppose, but what it is, is infrastructure improvements that involve soil water management, planting improvements, things like that, and that can be worked in at the same time that sidewalks are being moved around, or improvements are being made for pedestrians and things like that. We want to keep track of that as well.
Okay. And then number of approved exemptions from this policy.
That's important, we think certainly, because that would mean that, I mean, a designer of a roadway project didn't have to follow the policy, you want to know why.
My question extends over to, if you look to the right, it says TP and Z. And up until now, we haven't talked about TP and Z being, managing any of that.
Yeah, TPZ and bike ped.
But TP and Z hasn't been involved in any of the...
It'd be DPW, it'd probably be DPW's.
I'm just going to say, I think they did the TPZ for when they do a waiver of a sidewalk or a waiver of whatever part of the zoning regulation.
That's true, it could be a combination.
I think that's what you guys meant by that. But again, clear, to be clear, I think...
Well, again, the idea is that if DPW has been tracking it up until now, and been the keeper, kind of judge and jury on whether there are exceptions, I didn't, because I was looking for where TP and Z gets involved, for them to be judge and jury, some of that might have to go to a public hearing and get involved with a broader range of items on that. Okay, I think that's it for most of my question and comments. Any others important?
Thank you.
All right. Any comments from the public? We normally don't have public comments on a report like this, but since a number of people showed up, and rumor was that some people would like a chance to talk, we'll make an exception to our past practice. Please, come to the mic and introduce yourself.
Good evening, and thank you to the board for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight.
What's her name?
Lisa Neff. I'm from the American Heart Association. I'm the community health director for Connecticut. So, thank you very much to the group here, Billy and Laura, for all of your hard work on this project. The American Heart Association, American Stroke Association, as the largest voluntary health organization in the world, working to build healthier lives, free of cardiovascular disease and stroke. These diseases remain the number one and number five causes of death in the United States. And while we're working to support making improvements to traffic and pedestrian safety and implementing complete streets policy, we believe these changes will make it easier and safer to experience all that Fairfield has to offer. The AHA identifies complete streets as roads that have infrastructure and design components that allow safe, convenient, and comfortable travel along and across streets for all users and all modes of transportation. We work closely with the National Complete Streets Coalition, which was referenced by the group earlier, and we support the coalition's elements of an ideal complete streets policy. In particular, we advocate for policies that provide a vision for how and why the community wants its streets to be complete, specify that all users includes pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit passengers of all ages and abilities, as well as vehicles, encourages street connectivity, names to create a comprehensive, integrated, connected network for all modes, and establishes the performance standards that we were talking about with measurable outcomes. In addition to these elements, the AHA has also identified other components that are critical within any policy as it relates to equity. Specifically, the AHA believes that implementing agencies should build in specific steps for the planning and reporting of implementation as it relates to low and moderate income communities. We also believe that targeted steps need to be taken to ensure that the policy is implemented within these high-needs communities before the policy can have a universal impact. Complete streets policies make communities and neighborhoods more livable by ensuring that all people can get safely to where they need to go, whether that be work, school, the library, grocery stores, or parks. They also help people feel more connected to their neighborhoods, which improves quality of life. Let's make it safe for all people to share the road with cars and trucks. Sidewalks that connect to parks, public transportation, and schools, roads that include designated and protected bike lanes, and streets that accommodate all people can help us safely be active and improve the quality of life for all Fairfield residents and visitors to this vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public want to comment?
Since Cleary from the Health Department, just very quickly, just to say, you know, this is something the Health Department's been working on for probably 15 years, bringing speakers into town to promote awareness of the concept, and to get people to think about this in projects, and as well as just working alongside the committee in funding some of the, the work that they're doing. And so just to speak to grants, you know, the, the state recognized us, the Health Department, and the Bike Ped Committee on the work they're doing just this year, and reached out to us and said, "Hey, we've got some, some funding that doesn't look like it's going to be spent. We want to see if we can amend one of your contracts. Are you up for spending $20,000 more?" And we turned to the Bike Ped Committee and said, "Do you think we can pull this off within the next six months or so?" And they said, "Sure." And so we've, we were able to pull in another round of grant funding, amendment to our contract, just to further the plans that the committee already has, because they have plans in place, the policy's in place, and they're already doing the work. And so it just accelerated the plan that we were doing. So that's an example of how this type of work can, can take entities like the state and say, "Hey, people, these are people doing good work, let's help them further it and make it happen quicker." Thank you.
All right. Anyone else from the public want to speak?
Go ahead.
You will both have time, we're not going anywhere, so...
Thank you. Hi, Alyssa Israel, 679 Roland Road. Just awesome work by the committee, and as you all said, and I appreciate your comments and tweaking perhaps some of the language, but I would encourage the board to please keep the complete streets policy townwide, because this policy is, in my opinion, going to be extremely helpful with DOT, the Department of Transportation, and our state roads go all the way to the north of the town, so if we exclude those areas, it's like, it's not going to help us when we get up near the Merritt Parkway and Strattville Road, some of these other roads that go to the north of town. So please, please keep it townwide for that reason. And also, I just wanted to point out this checklist, which I think is really valuable. I see it being used by building committees just to stimulate the thought process about what could be done. You were talking, Chris, about lighting and sidewalks, and maybe, I don't know, the building committees have so much work before them, and I think sometimes they're focused so much on the building and, and perhaps not, I don't know, I've never served on a building committee, so I hope...
We do have opportunities coming up. Sounds like a volunteer to me.
Oh, man, that's way too much work. But, but yeah, I think it'll just stimulate the, the thought process about, about some of the things you were talking about, Chris. So I, I hope with some tweaking, this will be passed, maybe not by 4th of July, but sometime very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else from the public would like to comment? If you could introduce yourself, please.
I would be happy to. I am Kristen McCarthy-Wehhe, former member of this wonderful body, and I live at 1625 Melville Avenue, and it's a pleasure to be here, and fun to be on the other side today. As Smart Growth America says, safer streets mean stronger economies. And you have had some really great conversation here today with the folks from the committee, and I hope that you can find a way to get to a strong policy that will make our streets safer and our economy stronger. I want to join and echo in the thanks to the committee, since I've served as a member of this body, and even before that, people like Alyssa and others have worked to help our community. And I think it's really important to emphasize that complete streets is an approach. It is not necessarily a program or a policy or a design in, well, it can be, but it's an approach that, as Alyssa said, is something that I want us to see all over town. Earlier in the conversation, you were talking about Mill Hill and the lack of sidewalks. That design potential in the neighborhood, if that's something that a building committee or a neighborhood would deem appropriate, is an exact example of the kind of complete streets project that we're looking for to help make the town safer for residents. I want to just point out, in terms of some of those collaboration pieces, and having a complete streets mindset when we're thinking about all users, that you look at things from our Amtrak, our bridges, our railroad bridges, and the design there, and potential opportunities in past years to change design that would allow for safe sidewalks underneath those bridges, we didn't take advantage of that at the time. I wasn't part of town government at the time, but that's the kind of thing that a policy like this clearly written in place, no matter who is in office or who is in the positions, would be able to, to address. While I was sitting here today, I was going through some of my emails, and actually came up with a headline that talks about Florida and why this, this state thinks engineers can save pedestrian lives. So the design elements piece is so important. I know you have a lot more conversation to have with this body in terms of some of the wording, but I am here in strong, strong support. We have seen evidence in terms of investment. I have had conversations with the state DOT and other folks in state government about the elements of complete streets and what it does mean, and I was glad to hear Mr. Cleary talk about the fact that grants, sometimes we don't know what those grants will be and what exactly the criteria are. This puts us in a position to be ready to jump on those grants that come before us and say, "We're perfectly poised to, to take advantage," just as we were because of the good work that's been done. So I really appreciate your consideration for this, and can't wait to see a policy adopted by Fairfield. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Hi, Heather Dean, 919 Stilson Road. I'm also on the RTM in District Three. And for full disclosure, I am friends with Bill Pollock. I actually care for three of his children in my daycare center. He asked me if I would advocate for him. It's easily done. So that was the first thing I wanted to tell you about. The second thing is, I am one of those people that lives on a highway and on Stilson Road, and I use the sidewalk almost every day, multiple times a day, pushing a four-seated carriage along so the babies can get outside. So I am very much excited about hearing all of this, and that's just one small component of, of this project. And the third thing is, while the July 4th might be a lofty goal, and I recognize that, the devil is in the details, and I realize that, and I was listening to everything that was being said, and I hope that the punch list that will be created, and there will be a punch list, that it's not too terribly long or onerous, and that it can be accomplished, and we can see this happen. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? All right, thank you all. Back to the board. Any further comments from the board?
Just a quick, oh, go ahead, Chris.
I was going to say, no, I'm all set.
In 20 minutes, I'm going. I just wanted to quickly say again, thank you to the committee for all your hard work. It's evident by what's been presented to us prior to the meeting and tonight, that you've been very thoughtful and very thorough in your work, and it's very welcome. Thank you.
All right, and if I'm out on one, this town sends approximately $300 million to the state every year, so if there's a chance to get more of it back in grants, and this is going to help us do it, we definitely want to do that. So that's why, when I asked for that list of grant opportunities, it wasn't just to give you guys more work, it was because we really want to follow up on that and make sure everybody in town that touches any one of those is available and knows that this can help us get that. So that's, thank you. Second, as I mentioned, we had a long discussion, and I think two things I want to make very clear on. Personally, I very much support your efforts, and I wouldn't have read that report in that much detail and looked at the wording and all that if I didn't. Second, thank you for putting together a comprehensive report, because I couldn't have read it in that much detail if you hadn't put it together to allow for that, and that, for a group of volunteers, that was a tremendously accomplished and professional document. So thank you very much for that. And then three, the next steps, there are a number of tweaks, clarifications, explanations... And then three, the next steps, there are a number of tweaks, clarifications, explanations, some things I think that you want to clarify in terms of, are we looking at just downtown in some of those components? Are we looking at the broader town in other of those components? How do we track some of that stuff? So I guess I need your help in terms of, how do you tweak that? I'm sure you memorized everything we talked about. How do we, how do we go, how do we get through this process to get the appropriate tweaks and explanation done?
Probably go online.
Why don't you stand at the podium there? That's where, that's where X marks the spot.
X marks the spot. Likely, we'll watch the preview of this to make sure I get the punch list. We will make sure we get all our i's dotted and t's crossed, and we'll talk back with any of the other townspeople that we need to, like economic development, and clarify any of those other items, certainly with Bill's been so helpful all along. And so, if we ask him a couple more questions, it probably won't be too much for him, but so, and then we will report back on our progress, I guess, and hope to be on an upcoming agenda too.
Why don't you, why don't you get those done, I think, and get those back to my office, so I can share those with my colleagues. I think it's important, as much as there were a lot of details in that, I think most of them are clarified. I don't think anything we identified is a go-no-go kind of major glitch in terms of going through this. So I think that, again, I think that's a compliment to you all in terms of you and your team, and how you put all that together. So again, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up. Let's give everybody a chance to clear out. Looks like we lost our audience.
You want us to say something?
Yeah, sure. All right, item number eight, from the Director of Public Works, and this requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Resolve that the First Selectman is hereby authorized on behalf of the Town of Fairfield to receive and expend up to $42,000 to fund the restoration of the old yachtyard, yachtyard, isn't it?
Yes.
Building, the Burr Shed. 100% of that project cost be funded by two donations from the Southport Conservancy, with first covering $37,872 of known project costs, and the second reimbursing any expenditure beyond known project costs, up to $4,128. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
A second.
All right. Mr. Hurley, please take us through this.
Okay. The old yachtyard shop building, sometimes known as the Burr Shed, is located at the old yachtyard, a town of Fairfield property located at the end of Harbor Road in Southport. The shed is considered a historic structure, but is in poor shape. The roof trim, siding, and doors are in need of repair, or in-kind replacement. The interior is basically good condition, considering the age of the building. A few years ago, the Southport Conservancy approached the Town of Fairfield about raising funds for the repair of the structure, and earlier this year, the Conservancy obtained the historic district approval for in-kind repairs of the structure, and recently, the purchasing department solicited contract bids for the proposed repairs. That's how we know what the items will cost, for the most part. The purpose of the project is simply to repair the structure. It will allow the town to perform much-needed repairs or in-kind replacement to, for certain elements of the structure. It will allow the general public to enjoy visually its architecture, and allow for limited or approved access to the public. DPW and others might be able to utilize the building features, such as there'll be a community bulletin board, maybe a little history display, and very limited access to the tools, water, and electricity. The project will include all the components of bid 2018-58, which included repairs to the roof, siding, carpentry work, a steam box, which allows for the bending of wood, and other elements necessary. The contractor will be awarded the project pending the town approval. The project will be funded by donations by the Southport Conservancy. The first donation would be for $37,872 to cover the contract items, and the second donation will be in the form of a reimbursement for any slat repair or additional expenditures covering $4,128 for any extra work or materials. I believe in your packet is a confirmation or commitment letter by the Southport Conservancy, and the reason, just to, you know, I, my understanding is that when somebody donates money, I don't know if you want to get into it, donates money to the town, that money is basically a gift to the town. So we did it for the, you know, the, the main portion of the project, so that the second part, if there was contingencies that are not used, they don't technically lose that money, but they signed on board that they would reimburse us for the little bit of extra or contingency, if we happened to need it or use it.
Good, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I would say, thank you, Bill. This is 100% paid for by two donations. It's work which we know needs to get done. I look forward to seeing the completed shed.
Thank you.
Alan?
Yes, thanks as well, and just a quick question for me. What is the timing of the work?
They, they were trying to get it in for May. Obviously, schedule didn't permit that. I would imagine, once we get the approval, they can send the donation to us in June, so they could probably start work in July, if so needed. If not, it would be, imagine, August or September. But it would be in this, certainly this season.
Finished in the summer season?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or early fall, I'll say, summer or early fall season, definitely.
Good, thanks.
Bill, thank you. A big thank you to the Southport Conservancy.
Yes.
For funding this project, that is a great addition to the neighborhood, and we thank them for their community service and community money.
Make sure I really --
We did have a motion to put that before us, correct?
We did.
All right. So, any further comment from the board?
Nope.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Bill, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up is the Mill Hill School Building Committee Charge. With a bit of explanation here, what we did is basically take the Holland Hill Building Committee Charge, since that was a similar project, with also about a million dollar seed money, and then modified this with some of the recent clauses and additions we've put in. I think there are two things that I know we need to clarify and add. One is, we've got to put in the three options, and my thought would be that we ask for three plans to come back with bid prices. So in essence, we're going to ask the committee to go out and get three bids. So when this comes back to us a year from now, there is nothing else for us to do, other than approve this and get the project moving. I thought that might be the most expedient way to make sure everything moves forward on a timely basis from here. And the other point that came up, and it was mentioned, I think, Chris, in some of your comments and some of mine, was traffic study. A little more comprehensive than what we do for just onsite traffic at most schools, but looking more at the neighborhood, so we can see what's happening. Because the question is, a larger project where we already have issues, and as we pointed out, the roads don't have sidewalks or streetlights, what is some of the impact? So the intent would be to take what you have in front of you, tweak it a bit to make it reach smoother, add those two components in, and then anything else that you think about, or if there's anybody looking at home that is, has a chance to review this, and wants to suggest any change, who certainly happen to listen to those two. The idea would be to bring it back at the next meeting.
Sure.
When we're looking at the building committee for Mill Hill also.
I support the two changes you recommended off the bat. I definitely think there needs to be something done with the traffic study on the outside streets, not just in this, in the street, and the bus loop and that type of thing. It needs to be, you know, where the parents are currently dropping off their students for the ease of that, and, you know, streetlights, all that stuff. So definitely needs to be included in the charge.
All right. Mr. Colley?
I agree with that. Let's take it offline and add our comments along the way.
And again, I, I think that this is a little bit of a new process, but it's something I'd like to implement going forward, if it meets the needs of the board, which is, review something at one meeting, give us time to consider it, and then vote at the second meeting. So there's, we're not under the gun to both review, understand, and pass something on in one meeting.
Right. Just one quick thing, I mean, just as long as we're clear on the level of estimates that we want to get, you know, we don't want that early on, you know, we want bid pricing.
Yep, they're coming back with bids. We'll say that specifically.
Solid bid pricing.
Okay. Yeah, I did talk to the Chairman of the Board of Finance, just to confirm, that was my understanding of what they did, and that was what we, our intent was, and he was very much supportive of that. So that, again, the idea is, we come back, we've got three prices, we decide at that point how big a school we're going to build, and then it moves forward from there. There's no, go out to bid and come back in a few months and hopes we had some changes in terms of the pricing, so that we have all the information we need to make a decision at that point.
Agreed.
All right, if that's it for now, that's, we're done with that item. And next up is the tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of, wow, $405,619.59. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, any edits or changes?
Nope. The numbers match.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion made.